Well, good evening. Can you raise your hand in your back and see if you can hear me? How far back can you hear me? Cannot hear me. What now? Do I need to move closer? Try to use my teacher voice or my dad's voice. Any better? Okay. It's not a true mass if you want to get up and move closer. That won't offend anybody, but I'll do the best I can. Okay, even closer? We're getting better. All right. I'm the problem. We figured that out. Thank you. Well, good evening. Thank you, everybody. Uh, thank you, Father David, and the staff here for helping us set up. And the goal here is today to get an overview of, uh, family of parishes. So we put together some slides, but at the end we'll also have a question and answer sessions for the group. So there are a number of things as we started to roll this out that people wanted to know about their own parishes or their own different things. We're going to concentrate today on things just within the family of parishes, things that are going to be changing. Uh, but we'll have that question answering service or session at the end of tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and, uh, see how I do here. Audrey's got me set up perfectly here. So when we went through this in Wave One, not only do we have these problems, but everything we did remotely, we did on Teams or online. So we're a lot better off doing it in person now versus a year ago. So we'll figure this out. So you did that? Okay, I'll just use the arrows then. So, so as you see here, we have the, the five different parishes from, uh, the family. So something we went through as an archdiocese and kind of put those together. So essentially it is the five northern parishes within the Surf Vicariate. Uh, and so for today, we'll just have Father Jim start us off with a prayer and then I'll go ahead and get started.
I like this one. All I have to do is push one little switch. I'd like to, um, begin this evening with a passage from Luke's Gospel that Archbishop Vignoran often references when he reflects on our undertaking family of parishes. This is taken from chapter five of Luke's Gospel. "While the crowd was pressing in on Jesus and listening to the word of God, he was standing by the lake of Goodneserit. He saw two boats there alongside the lake. The fishermen had disembarked and were washing their nets. Getting into one of the boats, the one belonging to Simon, he asked him to put out a short distance from the shore. Then he sat down and taught the crowds from the boat. After he had finished speaking, he said to Simon, 'Put out into deep water and lower your nets for a catch.' Simon said in reply, 'Master, we have worked hard all night and have caught nothing, but at your command I will lower the nets.' When they had done this, they caught a great number of fish and their nets were tearing. They signaled to their partners in the other boat to come to help them. They came and filled both boats so that they were in danger of sinking. When Simon Peter saw this, he fell at the knees of Jesus and said, 'Depart from me, Lord, for I am a sinful man.' For astonishment at the catch of fish they had made seized him and all those with him, and likewise James and John, the sons of Zebedee, who were partners of Simon. Jesus said to Simon, 'Do not be afraid; for from now on you will be catching men.' When they brought their boats to the shore, they left everything and followed him." Good and gracious God, as we gather tonight to learn more about becoming a family of parishes, send your Holy Spirit to enlighten us as we put out into the deep, venturing into uncharted waters as we undertake this new direction as your church. May the words of Jesus to the apostles as they began their mission be not afraid. Be words for us as well. Help us to overcome our fears as we embark upon our new mission. And so we pray together as Jesus has taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name; thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. As some of you know, Archbishop Vignoran appointed me as moderator of our family of parishes. And I went to baby moderator's school last week. And, uh, I was, we were all reminded that as moderators, we are first among equals. And as we watched this presentation, I think that will be clear that this is not unification, this is collaboration, and that we are to be truly a family. And as I've pointed out to the members of Our Lady of Hope Parish and St. Margaret Parish, what we've been doing as collaborative partners for the last nine years is really what family of parish is all about. We're just inviting three more families, three more parishes to join in the collaboration that we have begun. But that we made clear as we watched this presentation. And then as Wade already said afterwards, we'll have a question and answer period when I will try and Wade will try and respond to those questions. Okay? So let's begin.
Thank you, Father Jim. So we've got a few different prayers as we go through or a few different slides. At the bottom it has, uh, also a gospel or a passage from the, the Bible as we go through each one. And, uh, we can sure make this available to everybody to send out afterwards as we go through here. So take a look going forward. So as we went through this, as we talk about the family of parishes, by the way, I'm Wade Richards, so work for the Archdiocese. About two years ago, I got hired on as a contract to just kind of help roll out mission strategic plans. So our goal was to go out as individuals to individual parishes and put together strategic plans, three to five-year plans to going forward. Uh, after two weeks of training, we all got sent home for this thing called COVID, said, don't worry about it, we'll figure it out. Um, and then at Pentecost Archbishop came forward and said that we wanted to restructure, continue to evangelize, continue to go out and unleash the gospel, but do it as family of parishes. So our group has kind of became that face of family of parishes with the ultimate goal to still do strategic plans, but we're not going to do them as a parish, we're going to do them as a family. So right now the Wave One families are getting together and putting their strategic plans together. So a year from now, this family will also put together their strategic plans. So I've got a video here with Archbishop Vignoran, uh, give a little bit of the backstory.
In the midst of the pandemic, with all of the things that is, that are on our minds, there could be a lot of reasons to put on hold our effort to become a missionary community, but not so. In fact, we know that the world needs now more than ever the good news of Jesus Christ. Our new model of families of parishes is a continuation of the fruit of the synod. From now on, our parishes will work together as families in order more effectively to fulfill their mission to evangelize. It's been the call in every age, and it's our call today. This is what God wants of the local church here in Wayne, Oakland, McComb, LaPierre, Monroe, and Sinclair Counties. In the months ahead, I am firmly convinced the Holy Spirit will give us new ways to think about how each of us can be strengthened by the other in order for each of us to do what God is inviting us to do so that the world hears the great good news. I take as my inspiration Blessed Solanas, who made it his watchword to say to everyone who came to him, 'Give God thanks in all his designs.' To give God thanks for all that has been accomplished, to give God thanks for all the joyful missionary disciples he's raised up in our midst, and to give God thanks for what he'll do ahead of time in the next generation.
And those of you that know Spanish, that's the subtitles on there. So we've done that different things. At the very end, it said, uh, for more information, go to familiesofparishes.org. So you're all welcome to go to that site. The next video I think has at the end also. But there is probably 50 frequently asked questions there. So if we don't answer them tonight, that's a great place to go in case you have any. And you can sign up at the bottom and we'll also give you, uh, monthly updates on families of parishes as we go forward. This is the tricky part. So coming together as disciples is the thought here as family of parishes. Um, as you looked at the synod, you look at unleash the gospel, it's how do we evangelize? So just kind of looking forward, looking at that, you know, how do we as brothers and sisters in Christ accept God's invitation to go out, go outside of our pews, outside of our own church, and to evangelize and work with others? Um, the structure then talks about being more communal. So we do things and, and the concern is not that we aren't doing things well in any individual parish, but let's take advantage of parishes and what different strengths they have. And maybe we all have the same weaknesses. You look around the room. So raise your hand if you're 55 or younger. Okay, so this is a huge group that's much, that's that young compared to other places where I've done this. So that's a challenge we all have. So just these kinds of things, if you look at it and it's not an individual church, but maybe as a family, we can put more of our energy into and solve some of these different things. And we invite individuals to relationship with others in the family. So you talk about a couple of them that have worked well together. And, and ultimately, you know, you go and we celebrate Mass, we go to the different parishes, and we want to be able to look around and see, and sometimes when you see other people that look familiar within your church, you also, I know everyone from 11:00 AM Mass at St. Mary's in Port Huron, and I know them very well. Maybe visually, I don't even know their names, but they could go to different masses, different churches. So just to be able to not only learn and see Christ in each other, but also to get a closer relationship with God as we go through as a family. So coming together more as disciples. Got a little bit more on the background of families of parishes, um, here from Archbishop Vignoran.
We began asking God to renew his church in Detroit. We prayed and discerned where God was leading us. We heard God asking us to return to the original mission of the church, to share the good news of Christ with all people. We heard him invite us to unleash the gospel in southeast Michigan and beyond. To answer this call, we need to transform our parishes from inward-pointing, maintenance-focused buildings into outward-facing, mission-focused communities. Today, we are embarking on the next chapter of this missionary transformation. Beginning in July 2021 and continuing over the course of 2022, parishes across the archdiocese will come together to form families of parishes. A family of parishes is a group of three or more parishes working together in deeper and more intentional ways than parishes have ever done before. Each parish within a family will retain its own unique identity, similar to how siblings have their own unique roles in their families. While this is a new model for us, similar structures are working successfully in other parts of the country and in Canada. Families of parishes will empower priests, deacons, and lay staff to share their gifts and talents with all of the parishes in the family. Families of parishes will allow for greater collaboration and focus on mission, better care for the people in our communities, both parishioners and non-parishioners, and more effective stewardship of our limited human and material resources. In the months and years ahead, we will embrace new and innovative ways of working together, strengthening the bonds that already exist among parishes and building new bonds everywhere else. For many of our parishes, this will be an entirely new process, requiring everyone to choose trust over fear. And for all of us, this new reality will ask from us a renewal of confidence in Jesus's power and his constant presence among us. To learn more about this next chapter in our missionary transformation, to view a list of the parishes that make up each family, and to stay updated with the latest news, please visit familiesofparishes.org.
Thank you, Audrey. So if you look at that, there, there's a lot in that. And again, if you go and sign up at familiesofparishes.org, you can listen to this. So one key thing and one thing we found in Wave One. Um, so they did, each individual parish will keep their own identity, their own dritic person in Kenan Law. But so there is many things there that are going to be the exact same thing. Many of the families in Wave One have not even noticed a difference for the normal person out in the pew. Uh, but things like finances, they're still, you're not going to share them in a, uh, open, open community, that each parish is going to be in charge of their own finance. Each parish is going to continue to, uh, just operate on their own. And things like, uh, whether it be festivals or different things, their own characteristics, we're not looking to have everybody do the exact same thing. In fact, we also want to capitalize on that and use some of that diversity. And what we've seen is, uh, the different parishes support everyone's different thing as they move forward. So it's, uh, as far as family of parishes. But we did realize there is a way to, if you get together, you can also take some of your strengths, some of your things you're using, and use those resources and maybe use them differently. Use them better, take advantage of different things. One of the drivers, there's about 220 priests right now in the Archdiocese of Detroit. At the current curve, about five years from now, there'll be 50 less priests. So that includes the normal, that normally come in, people that retire, pass away, transfer back out, those kinds of things. In fact, this year, very sad, um, the first weekend in June, they have ordination. We do have zero priests that are being ordained in the Archdiocese of Detroit this year. So, uh, so as you, if you think about there, there's roughly 50 families, 52, 53, something like that. So we'll have 50 less priests five years from now. Today, today, not later, they're already deciding if someone moves, transfers, passes away, retires, do I have somebody to fill that spot? So if you look at the five parishes we have here, we have five priests, there probably will not be a lot different going on, but we want to build a structure with the priests, with all the laity, all the others in the family, and start working together and communicating and collaborating on different things like Father Jim said. If one then retires, transfers, whatever, then the four of them will also know what's going on with the entire family. So that's some of the thought process behind it. In the middle of the pandemic, there also was, you know, we had priests that weren't able to do Mass or different things and fell into some of those high-risk categories. So that's also was another thing. So I will tell you, a lot of this whole process was covered in prayer. 2014 was a year of prayer. Uh, Archbishop Vignoran covered this in prayer. This lent, uh, each and every priest in the Archdiocese in our group, we're praying for them by name, just kind of going forward. And I ask you guys to take all this to prayer too. Where can you fit in? Where can you, because it is something, if we continue and each pastor, each priest, kind of everything in the parish has gone through them. So we're asking them also to, to make a totally different change from their formation, what they've been successful with, and put some of the things in laity's hands in order to go through and kind of, uh, work some of those programs a little bit. So just a little overview of the slide of your, uh, introducing your family. We've got a little bonus in this family too, but, um, so Holy Anne at St. Bartvist, St. John, our Father John is joining us today. Uh, Father David again hosting us here today at St. Isaac Job. Father Ron could not be here but St. Margaret of Scotland. And Father Greg could not be here tonight, St. Pio in Roseville. And then we heard from Father Jim and Our Lady of Hope. So that's the five parishes. Um, interesting, I was not involved completely in it, but we kind of said the two rules are you have to have three to six parishes in your family and you have to be touching, you have to be contiguous with your borders. And so with that, so Surf, the Surf Vicariate kind of broke up in the north, central, and south vicariate. So if you look in this family also, St. John Def Center then i- is also a part of it. So out of these points. So they have St. Loretta, I believe, and also here, they have a couple of places and they do Mass. A little different, they don't have a parish. Most of the 400 people or 400 families involved with that, they are registered at their own individual parish. So they're going to be a part of this family as well, but also we're going to try to figure that is, it's kind of unique. And if you look at any of family through this, all 50-some, everyone is a little unique in some way. So we'll figure this out and Father John, uh, or Father Mike Depchek will, uh, is a player of that. He was also concerned when we come up here and do this in order to get a truth question and answers. It's more than just, um, translating, you have to pause and give things with sign language back and forth. So I just pray that we work through that, but also just have a little patience when we get them involved with this. So we'll figure where that is.
I'm meeting with Father Mike on 29th.
Perfect.
And to talk about how they might be integrated as part of our family.
Okay, great, thank you. So that's the 29th integrated or worked with Father Mike. So there is ideas and plans, and this is what it could look like in your family. The priests have met once, they're going to meet a lot more. There are a lot of questions that you have now that we're going to let the families decide. So we kind of put up this seven-lane highway and said, this side's the mountain and this side's the cliff, and you have to stay somewhere in the middle. So we have families up in the, the thumb that have three parishes that have 250 families each. And so we set up a framework for them that also sets up for the three families or three parishes in Rochester that have 3,000 families each in them. So we try to set that up. So that framework, uh, is pretty wide in order to do that. So I mentioned, um, in Wave One, we did things, and obviously the first time you go through things, hopefully you get a little better. So in Wave One, when we did these type of things, we had to do them online. So we had to invite people online. You see the challenges we had here just figuring out how to advance the slides. So you can imagine those of, of everybody at home in their own room. But when we did this, we had breakout sessions and we kind of, when we said, when we did this as a family, what type of things do you think could happen or could be something that you're looking forward to as a family? And so we recorded a number of parishioners. So that's what this is right now.
Thinking, take my parish times four, you know, add three, with that much momentum, enthusiasm, dedication, there's just about nothing you can't do.
Uh, one thing that really stood out is that, uh, our family of parishes has a, uh, quite diversity of worship, ways of worshiping. We're looking forward to, uh, uh, getting exposed and experiencing those different varieties of worship.
They have very good conversation. Um, everybody is looking forward, um, to seeing this move forward.
You can see me, I got a cool shirt on that says, uh, keeping it in the family. We are now family officially. So when things work to the good of God and we put it in the hands of the Holy Spirit, things can grow and blow up.
We really look forward to being able to, uh, form some, uh, good, strong relationships to help us grow in our faith. So we're really excited.
I think there was a lot of enthusiasm, uh, interest and hopefulness that the program is going to help us go deep into our faith.
Everything's starting to really come together. I'm getting kind of excited about it, to be honest with you, because as of attention, of course, I've seen in our area just less and less volunteerism for that. And being able to maybe consolidate as a larger group would be of a much bigger benefit.
I just like the idea that I can go into another parish and I'm going to know somebody. I like that idea.
Excited from things that we shared that we liked from each of our parishes, where there were some positive things about women's group, um, different Bible study programs, and I think we're looking forward to like collaborating and how can we grow together and to expand those types of programs for all of our parishes.
We're very excited about having four times the number of locations to have events that people might come back to that event and then think, you know what, I should be going back to church too. And then we see them in church on Sunday.
We're looking forward to it. We do believe we have the reason to know that we can share our gifts and our talents that would benefit everyone. Um, and so it's really a positive for us.
The strengths and weaknesses of these parish, I think once we mend that together, everything that he can say, everything will just fall into place for the whole family. So I think we did well.
I think the openness of what this could hold for the future of our church, um, was, um, evident in people sharing.
We were all very positive and enthusiastic about the gifts our parish had and talked about some of those. And we are all very excited to, to move forward this family of parishes, obviously, and sharing. So we're, we're looking forward to it and sharing the gifts that each of us bring to it.
We just want to, uh, start to be more, more involved in the community. I won't say visible because the church is big and it's visible to the community, but we want to have more actual hands-on, feet-on-the-ground within the community.
So if we can find ways to do things more efficiently, it's going to be healthier in the long run for the parishioners, the parishes, and the church as a whole.
There's a real interest and excitement, and I think the, some of the value that we're really going to see out of this is being able to reach out and engage and serve the youth of our parishes.
And how blessed we are that our Catholic faith is so rich that there are so many, um, opportunities, both in worship and socially, that each one of these parishes will bring to the family.
I think that we all saw opportunities where we can, uh, strengthen the synergy, if you will, between the, the parishes. I think that we all saw opportunities where we can strengthen the synergy, if you will, between the parishes.
So much more powerful with three other parishes involved in praying for those intentions, and having that many more people praying for one another.
It kind of made me feel like I wanted to do, you know, just go, you know, check out one of their masses to just, you know, see how it felt compared to mine.
Everybody is very comfortable in their church, but we're also comfortable in meeting other people, and bringing us together to share and bring things around to all our parishes. It sounds like everyone is on board, is on board and ready to greet and meet each other.
Just being open to all of this is really allowing the Holy Spirit to work in our lives.
So I worked for thirty-one years with Cargill. In last twenty, we're in St. Clair, had a salt packaging facility. We packaged about seven hundred tons of salt a day. So I don't know where it all went to, but somebody was eating all that, we were a little plant. But so we went through a lot of changes, and changes are hard, and you're talking about resources. So let me tell you a couple of things that are not planned in this. There are not planned any, as we get to staffing. In Wave One, we haven't had anybody that said, because of Family of Parishes, your job's going away. We have a staff meeting coming up, two weeks from now, somewhere in that area, that will, twenty-second, that we'll talk with the staff. So if you're here now, just a little patience, we're going to give a big high overview. There's no plan to close any parishes. But there also is really a reality that says, we have a number of parishes that have ten, fifteen, twenty percent of the people there, and does it make sense to do that in the future? So we don't know that, that is not any goals of the Family of Parishes. But I know when I hear resources and utilizing them, that kind of always concerned me at my plant, at work, or the number of people. So just something to be aware of. I think we're going to talk a little bit about the structure now, if I remember the slides. So when we talk about this, and this is a little bit of an eye chart, how far back can you see that? Raise your hand if you can read that. Very little, okay, sorry about that. So the in-soliderum model, so there's two models that we're doing. One is a one-pastor model. So one pastor is over all of the parishes in the family. There is only three of those in Wave One and one in Wave Four. So most of these apply, it's an in-soliderum model. So we say in-soliderum, and Father Jim mentioned it, he's the moderator, which is the leader among equals. So all of them in soliderum are working together, so all five pastors are working together. Other priests, I know they have weekend assignments, I don't know if you have any of those in this family, and other deacons are all going to be guided by the moderator, so kind of report to them. The six boxes underneath then are kind of a different way that we're breaking it up now as we go forward. So there are a number of ways now that we're doing it. And this is, by the way, also how the archdiocese is breaking up. So if you take the word director out of there, so we'll start with the one here on the right, it's mission support. So how are we going to support the mission in all of the different families? So we'll have a person, we'll have a department that has, it'll be in charge of the financial, all the IT, all the human resources, and also the maintenance. So that'll fall under the mission support. They're supporting everybody else that is doing something directly to the parishioners. So those five areas, one is discipleship. Under discipleship, we have youth, adult faith formation, small groups, childhood, and sacramental prep. The next one is engagement. So some of these aren't currently things that we call by this title, but engagement, so that's evangelization, ministry placement, RCIA, hospitality, communication, ecumenicism. So I know RCA in my family, we might have two or three, five people maybe in each of the four parishes. So we all meet once a week for those nine months, some do a year-long program. They're talking about getting together and doing that, and having it, so we now have twenty people in a room, and we're doing it, and maybe a little more elaborate, a little more. So those are the type things we're looking at, kind of taking advantage of those resources. The third one there is evangelical charity, Catholic services, what you know it as. So one of the gentlemen here, he said he was a vince, what's St. John, or St. Vincent de Paul. So that kind of goes through that, all the human services, care ministries, communication outreach, fraternal operations. So those type things. The fourth one over is family ministries, which is a new one. So if you address things as a family is the thought, and kind of do things all the way through, supporting a family, marriage ministry, infant baptism, childcare, vocations. Obvious vocations is a big key to this as well. And the last one's director and worship. So if you think about on a Sunday experience, the homilies, the hymns, and the hospitality, so those type. So the different areas, that's where they are, they kind of broke them down as we go forward with the in-soliderum model. Even smaller eye chart, but essentially, then the five parishes are at the bottom there. And each of those parishes will report up through all of those. So we may have somebody in charge of worship, a director of worship for the family, and then all the parishes will work through them. So what we're finding is, right now, there are some of these that are very easy. Evangelical charity are easy to start combining now. This is a little bit more of a marathon than a sprint. So very few have all of these things already worked out in Wave One. This is something we want to put a structure together for in the future, that we can work together and be there. Assuming we're not going to have a priest in each parish somewhere down the line, how do we do that? This family is very similar to many others. So if you go back fifteen, twenty years, I think four out of the five parishes had some mergers, some clusters. That's a way we could have kept handling this, and they worked, but they're very painful. So this is what the Archbishop has put together and said that going forward, this is the organization we want to use. Off the side here, there's a family leadership team, family pastoral council, family finance team, and a family prayer and intercessory team. Do we have intercessory teams here, prayer teams, at your individual parishes? Anybody, you do here? Okay, very key, I went yesterday to a three-hour overview on that, too, just kind of pulling those together. So if that is one of your charisms, if you've ever been called and gifted, or someone, people are asking you to pray for them, to pray for this, and have an intercessory prayer team as a family to pray for the priest's intentions, to pray for this, is just so powerful, and we found that all the way through. We're down to the question and answer session. So I think, and let me grab a chair here.
Let me start off with answering a question that came to us a couple of weeks ago. And I'm the one to answer it, because I'm the one that's been here the longest. The question was, why do some pastors stay for such a short time, and why do some stay for such a long time? The Code of nineteen seventeen, the Code of Canon Law of nineteen seventeen, if you were named pastor, you were almost irremovable. When Cardinal Dearden came back from the Second Vatican Council, he had a gentleman's agreement with the pastors, that if he asked them to move, they would move. But if they said no, he understood that they were within their rights. In nineteen eighty-three, the revised Code of Canon Law provided that a conference of bishops could request a term of office for a pastor. And the American bishops asked for a six-year term with a renewable term of six years, so twelve years. But the law is silent as to what happens after twelve years. Now, some bishops interpreted that very strictly. When a pastor had served for twelve years, he moved. Cardinal Maida and Archbishop Ignorant, at least in his early years, both Cardinal Maida and Archbishop Ignorant were of the mind that if the pastor was happy, the people were happy, and that the pastor wanted to continue, so be it. That's what happened. I was assigned as pastor of St. Germain in nineteen eighty-nine. My first term was up in ninety-five, and I was assigned for a second term, which was up in, I gotta do the math, I did it before, and I, two thousand and one. And I asked for a third term, because Cardinal Maida was of the mind, if you wanted to stay and the people were happy, you would. So I got my second, my third term that took me to two thousand and seven. Well, two thousand and seven was a very important year for St. Germain Parish and St. Gertrude Parish. For those of you who remember, back in two thousand and five, Cardinal Maida invited all the parishes of the diocese to be involved in the Together in Faith process, which was a means for each parish to evaluate their strengths, weaknesses, whatever. And it was a very good reflective experience. But a part of that was that you were to identify a partner parish, so that if in case one or both priests left to take a new assignment, retired, died, then, and there wasn't enough pastors to replace, that you would be partnered with that parish. Well, it seemed perfectly logical for St. Germain and St. Gertrude to be partnered, because we're one mile apart on Martin Road. And since the schools at St. Gertrude's had closed back in nineteen seventy-one, families who lived in the St. Gertrude geographic area, their children came to St. Germain School. So in two thousand and six, we presented the partner plan to the Archbishop. He accepted it, and our regional bishop at the time said, put that up on a shelf. You know, you got it done, it's just going to be up there on a shelf. Ha! Two thousand and seven, as you may know, St. Gertrude's parish had been, had been the responsibility of the Dominican community for about thirty years. Well, the provincial of the Dominicans wrote to the Archbishop and said, when Father McGreevy's term is up, we have nobody to replace him. So guess what? This plan that was supposed to be on a shelf, boom! So my term was extended to June thirtieth, two thousand and nine, to complement Father McGreevy, whose term was up June thirtieth, two thousand and nine, okay? Well, then, having checked with Archbishop Maida and with Archbishop Ignorant, I submitted my name as pastor of the new parish, and I was accepted. So the timeline started all over again, because now I was being pastor of a new parish. And then I reached the age where I can stay as long as I'm able. So, but, so that just, it was a series of circumstances that allow, has allowed me to remain as pastor of, well, St. Germain Parish for twenty years, and now I'm in my thirteenth year as pastor of Our Lady of Hope. Now, there is also, there are some priest friends of mine who look forward. They enjoy the parish that they're in, but they also enjoy moving. And so after one term or two terms, if the bishop asks them to move, they're more than happy to move. I always have said, I would take it as a sign to move when I'm bored. I've never been bored. Anyway, that was a question that came to us in the early reporting, and I gave this explanation to the priests that I was with, and they said, good, you're the one to tell them why, you've been here so long. Okay, so having said that, and to play off of what Wade already said, forming a Family of Parishes is a work in progress. It's not done, it's not going to be done by July first. Wade also mentioned that we, the five pastors, five priests of the family, met for the first time last week. And miracle of miracles, Tuesday is nobody's day off. So I said, great, that means that all of our meetings are going to be on Tuesday, because nobody can say, I can't come, it's my day off. So we met for the first time last Tuesday, just to begin the process. And a very important piece in the process is the forming of our covenant. It's a document that will spell out how the five of us will relate to each other and to the communities that we will take primary responsibility for. None of us will be pastors, but will be primarily responsible for the parish that we have pastored. Okay, Father John Winnicke will continue to be primarily responsible for Holy Innocence, St. Barnabas. I will still be primarily responsible for Our Lady of Hope, et cetera. But it's, we will be doing it as a family, and we spell that out in the covenant. And that's the homework that I gave to the priests, that when we meet after Easter, that we will begin to put together the first part of that covenant that will spell out maybe some of the questions you're going to ask tonight. Also, Wade made mention that on the twenty-second, we are having a separate gathering, question and answer gathering for employees and staff of the parishes. Because tonight is to be general questions focused on the family. The specific questions about employment, wages, benefits, you know, all those kinds of particulars, we felt would be better to take care of in a separate meeting. So that's going to take place on the twenty-second. So if you have those questions, please hold them for that meeting, okay?
Father Jim, we did put together some of the questions that came in a little ahead of time. If you want me to read those through, and then, and then what I'll do is I'll just walk around with a microphone, and we'll make sure we get, so the first one says, what will happen with the schools? Will they be merged?
That is, Father David and I have had some preliminary discussions. And I think probably the first thing we might begin to do is to look at ways that we can collaborate in terms of buying of supplies, textbooks, that kind of thing. But I also think we need to, as if, as we talk about the schools of St. Germain and St. Isaac-Joakim, we also have to remember that there are four more Catholic schools in our vicarious. And I think it would be more beneficial in terms of working with the Mission Support Director, it might be more beneficial for him to, or her, to maybe see ways that they can do some buying power for all six schools in our vicarious. But anyway, so there's nothing, well, and again, as, in some of the testimonies that were given, and in some of the things that Wade has said, each community and each school really has its unique character. And is there a way to bring those together without losing? So it's going to be discussed, yes.
Will finances be shared in the family?
No, you've already spoken to that. Each parish will continue to do its own budgeting and raising of the funds to cover the budget. Now, as we move along, we may work into the individual budget, shared costs, like some of these director positions. You know, if we have a director who's responsible for five parishes, it would only be equitable that all the parishes share in some way in that expense. So as we move, there will be probably worked into the individual budgets, shared expenses. But as you've said, no, we, every parish is going to be responsible for their own budget and their own financing.
And the Parish Financial Council is canonical, it's in Canon Law, so that will continue in all cases. The Parish Finance Council will have a Family Financial Council also, but it'll be made up of people of each parish, Family Council. What are some examples of how the priests, personnel, and resources, quote, will be better utilized, unquote, as the parish has become a family?
I would think, and I've said this and written this, we have a very special geographic relationship. special geographic relationship. I mean, we are, we are no more than ten minutes apart from any one of the five locations. So if we were to discern that offering religious education, rather than in five sites, it might be better to utilize resources in two, we're not asking families to drive halfway across the county. At baby moderator's school, I was talking to a couple of the other moderators, and that geographic thing is very important because, you know, I said, well, we're only ten minutes apart. And one of the other moderators said, you have to drive a half an hour to forty-five minutes to get to the next site. So that, and that's going to play in a very important part, I think. So what it might, we might be able to utilize resources better is by sharing programs rather than each one, each parish doing it separately. We as, well, Father Rhonda Hunt and I have been doing this as collaborative partners for the last nine years, but we've already, the five of us have already talked about sharing the pulpits, getting, as a way for, for the people to get to know us and for us to get to know the different parish families. So that's, that's some of the ways that we're beginning to talk about stuff.
Yeah, we just had a, a family in Wave One, a, a long-term business manager in, in a parish has announced her retirement in July first, and so they're working as a family. They have people that do part-time in bookkeeping and part-time of the, at different sites. And so they're trying to get now the same people involved, get more consistency and make them full-time employees. So just as things come up, they're also trying to take advantage of that. A couple of them here, will a Saturday morning mass be available within the family?
You're talking about adding more? I don't thi, I, I shouldn't say that. I know that one of the, one of the priorities for us is for the five of us to look at our mass schedules, both in terms of weekends, but also weekdays. St. Germain, Our Lady of Hope, has had Monday evening mass probably for forty years. I mean, it was, it was in place when I arrived thirty-three years ago. So we have, our weekday Monday mass is in the evening, it's at seven PM. So, I don't know, I think it was before COVID. Father Rhonda Hunt at St. Margaret's asked me to take a funeral because he had a doctor's appointment or something. So, and St. Margaret's morning mass on Monday is at nine AM. So, and I knew that Father Mike Loyson was having the mass, so I got over to St. Margaret's about nine-thirty, early for the funeral at ten, but just as the morning mass was getting out. So I was walking down the hall to the chapel to, to say hi to Father Mike, and here comes all the people. And I went, I thought to myself, oh, this is where all the Monday morning mass people come. They come to us on Tuesday and Wednesday, but on Monday morning, they're at St. Margaret's. So does it make sense for four or five parishes in our family to each have a morning mass? Maybe not, especially, again, as I say, geographically, we're only ten minutes apart. We're not asking you to forego a Monday, a Wednesday morning mass because it's a half an hour away. But, so that is, that's something that we're, yes, definitely is, we have to discuss, is how our, how we're going to do our weekend mass schedules and our, our weekday mass schedules. Whether we're going to be able to add another mass, I'm not going to say no, but I'm not going to enthusiastically say yes either. Especially since, especially since you have funerals, and, and, and many of you know that by choice, many people want their funerals on Saturday. And, and you probably have weddings on Saturday, and then you've got your Saturday evening So I, anyway, so that's, so that's a no, that's a maybe. Maybe.
So, so many of the questions you started with too, that, you know, at, at a parish for many years, they've had a Monday night mass. So one of the things we also, this is a time with family of parishes, to stop and say, are we doing things that two people come to that mass, or three people? I, I'm not going to use that mass as an example, but also look at what we're doing now and what do we maybe stop doing so we can add other things going forward? What do you envision or project family of parishes looking like in five years or ten years? Get out your crystal ball, Father.
Yeah, right. You know, that's, that's a terribly impossible question. Well, we were talking a little bit before. If St. Pio sells the Sacred Heart site and is able to sell that property on Thirteen Mile next to the campus, they get this financial windfall, that's going to change things. Holy Innocent St. Barnabas is looking to sell the St. Barnabas campus, that's going to give them a nice windfall if that happens. But, you know, you don't know. And in the next five years, will there still be five priests? I don't know. So it, it's really hard to project. But that's, again, as I said, this family of parishes is meant to be a work in progress. It's not going to be cast in stone. We might come up with a, a program or a design for our family in July, but by the following July, one of us, one of the priests might be no longer with us. You know, a boiler blows up in a parish, you know, so it's very hard. It's, I, at least as I see it, it's very hard to, to look ahead that far and try to project. I think the, the best thing about the family is that it gives you, I believe, some flexibility that you can compensate and you can deal with because you're not dealing with a crisis or you're whatever by yourself. You're doing it as a family. And I think that's, that's probably a key to this whole thing, is that it does give us flexibility as we look to the years ahead.
Wade and Father, I just want to throw this one in, somebody handed it to me when we walked in, again, that five to ten-year timeframe, number of parish, number of churches that would close. We answered that, but I think just to acknowledge the question.
It, it's not in the plan. I mean, that was not the purpose of Archbishop Ignorant putting this family of parishes together. That was not the plan. But, I mean, it's not going to be any surprise to you if I say, who knows? If, if one of our parishes in our family, if their membership continues to decline, if their financial situation continues to decline, the roof of the church blows off and they lose a boiler, are we going to be able to say, keep that open? I can't say yes. But, so it's going to depend. You know, it's going to depend. It's not in the plan, but being realistic, it, it might happen. It might happen.
Yeah, I think the families of parishes, there's the structure to continue to be sent on mission, to continue to evangelize, evangelize. So knowing that we go out and spread Jesus with others, spread that in order to fill our, our pews back up, in order to have, bring people to Jesus is what our ultimate goal is, as a Catholic church, to evangelize. So if you look at the priests, we talk about, that sounds like a pretty scary number, the people in the pews is pretty similar. And we also have this whole COVID question of are people going to come back and where they are. I don't know this parish, but, or this family, but in general, the attendance at Catholic masses is very similar to the priests too, so you also got to look at that realistically. Is that the last one we have up here, Audrey? So I'm going to go a little off script and we'll kind of walk around, raise your hand, and we'll can get a, get some questions here.
My question, but mine's a good example, if Father was talking about using our resources correctly. Because with, I know at Lady of Hope, we were doing St. Gertrudes on Sunday and St. Germain's during the week, and it became, it became financially impossible to do St. Gertrudes. So a decision was made by Father and the parish to only work with St. Gertrude building. And that was a very good decision for our parish.
But, you know, when, when, when St. Germain and St. Gertrude parishes were consolidated, or merged, the, the reason for the merge was because of lack of pastors. It wasn't because of lack of parishioners, it wasn't because of lack of finances at that point. And the decision was made by the archdiocese, by the Archbishop, that both campuses would remain open when we merged. And it made sense at that time because the numbers called for us gathering to worship at St. Gertrudes on the weekends because it was a larger worship space. And it made perfect sense, it was a shock, but it made perfect sense when we were told that we needed to have all of our weekend masses at one site because that's the only way we would come together as one Eucharistic community. It was, it was a big, it was a shock. But I understood it. And I, and I said to the people, the last Sunday that we had Sunday mass at St. Germain, I said, I'm not asking you to go there alone. I'm going with you. My deacon is going with us, our minister of music is going with us, we're all going. And it was, I, we had a wonderful worship experience at St. Gertrude's campus. But as the years went on, we are, the priests can affirm this, but every October, we are asked to take a mass count, of how many, you know, how many people are at mass on the weekend. Well, in two thousand and thirteen, I had the elders do it two weeks in a row because I didn't believe the numbers. And then because, and, and at that time, I wrote and spoke about the difference between a presumption and an assumption. A presumption is based on fact, and you can presume. An assumption is based on nothing, in, in fact. When we began, the presumption was that our numbers would require us to be at St. Gertrudes for weekend masses. My assumption was, is that for some reason, if we moved from St. Gertrude to St. Germain, I'd have to build, I'd have to expand the worship space to make room. Well, in two thousand and thirteen, when I had them count, I went back over to St. Germain, and I counted every single chair. It would all fit. Our numbers had gone down, partly because there were those who chose not to stay with the new parish, but secondly, most importantly, was attrition by death. In the first three years of, of, of Our Lady of Hope, I had over seventy-five funerals a year, and it was two to one. Two at St. Gertrudes for every one at St. Germain. Because that was one thing that at that point, parish life in working with parishes, merging them, that was one thing they did not look at, was the demographics. And, and it was just, they were dying. And after twenty, after that mass count, I asked my business manager, I said, how much is it costing us to keep that St. Gertrudes campus open? It was costing us a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year. And as a parish, we used it three hours on the weekend for, for masses and funerals. Now, there was other activity, St. Isaac's and St. Joan of Arc rented out our gym space, there were three, three IHM sisters renting out the rectory, there were other activities. But in terms of parish, it was three hours on a weekend plus funerals, and it was costing us a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And the church needed a new roof, which was going to be probably a fifty thou, or five-hundred thousand dollars. It needed a new boiler. The parking lots were in terrible shape. And just to counter, if somebody said, well, why don't you close the St. Germain campus and move the grade school over to St. Gertrudes? And I love that St. Gertrudes Elementary School, it was a great building. But I had an architect come in, and I said, I have one question. How much would it cost to bring that building up to code? A half a million dollars. Because it's a two-story building, you have to put an elevator in, and think about it, we would have to reorient the stairwells to reach out, to go out. Because the way they were, they emptied into a centered, central hallway. That's very dangerous. But you would have to reorient the stairwells out. Five hundred thousand dollars. You were looking at at least a million and a half dollars to try and keep that plant up. It wasn't going to work. Providentially, I got an email from a developer. Is the St. Gertrude campus available? I called the property office really fast. I mean, I had, I had determined whether we were able to sell it or not. I was closing that because it was just costing us money. So, as I say, what originally the merger was called for was because of lack of pastors. It had nothing to do with number of households or finances. When we started this process in two thousand and seven, those weren't even on the discussion. But by two thousand and thirteen, things had changed, and you have to change with what's there. So, anyway, did that answer a question?
I'll come to you in a green second.
Thank you, Father. When you were showing the org chart up there, and you add a layer, it, it appeared that there was an added layer of management in between the physical churches and their, you know, communities and going up. Are you going to fill that in with existing resources? Are you going to hire that out? Because you also mentioned sharing the cross.
We're going to have to, the question is, with those six positions of directors, which kind of introduces another layer, so to speak, we will certainly, the, the five of us priests, along with our current pastoral staffs, will have to, you know, discuss with them, do you feel that you have the resources, the talents, the gifts to fill one of those positions? And if so, we'll, we'll see if we can, we'll, we'll fill them from within. And, and again, from the experience of Wave One, and from, that was one of the great things about going to baby pa, baby moderator's school this time, was after each presentation, there was a, a, a follow-up by one of the moderators from Wave One, sharing their experience. And when it came to these role, these responsibilities and roles of directors, it varied greatly. Some were able to fill almost all of those positions right away. Some are only partway, they've got maybe one or two of those directors in place. Some have discerned that at least for the interim, they will have maybe two or three people dividing up the responsibilities. So I don't, so the answer is, I'm not sure. It, it depends upon the resources that our, our current pastoral staffs have and how we discern that we need to fill those positions.
I was just kind of wondering if it's just an added layer of management inside the IR bill.
No, I, I think it's, it's meant, again, one of the, one of the, one of the goals of this family of parishes is to help relieve the priests of some of their administrative responsibilities. Now, I've been very blessed. When I was pastor of St. Germain, I did not have a business manager. I felt that between myself, my finance council, my maintenance people, we were able to run the parishes quite well. But when, you know, the decision was made to merge and become Our Lady of Hope and to keep both campuses open, I thought, no way am I going to do this without a business manager. And I've been blessed with two business managers, by one that retired and my current one. I've been blessed with tremendous business managers that have taken a tremendous burden of administration off my shoulders. Pastors who don't have the luxury, the finances to hire a, a business manager, still are carrying a lot of that administrative burden on their shoulders. These directors are in a sense meant to help remove that level of administrative responsibility off of the priests and give it to them instead. Does that make sense?
And I think in, in Wave One, the experience, it kind of depends on the family. So some people are a director of two different areas. Almost all of them have the same number of employees, but do they have the right people and they just kind of shuffle duties? That answers it as well.
My question is...
My question is, being that we're going to be a parish of five, will we have to go every Sunday to a different church to go to Mass on the weekend?
Oh, no, 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 no. No. What initially we're going to, would like to, we, we talked about is expanding what Father Ron and I have done at St. Margaret's and Our Lady of Hope, where the five of us will exchange places. Maybe, yeah, rotate. We're going to rotate. We're not asking you to rotate. No, 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 no. It's, we'll, and, and we're, I mean, I'm not going to set up a schedule of where we're going to do this every month or every two months. I said, "Let's just initially do it once, and then see how it goes from there." But no, 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 we're not talking about you rot, no, it's not about you rotating every month. It's, we're, we're going to just do it. Okay.
And, and just to clarification, you said five going to one parish. We are going to have five parishes. The family of parishes, if you look it up, it is not, we're not creating any new structure like it's on the books as a family of parishes. It's still going to be the five parishes.
I have two questions. One for you, Father Jim. The commissions, committees, parish councils for each parish, are they going to stay intact?
It's going to be up to the individual parish to decide. If, the priest of a, of a parish who he has primary responsibility for, if he determines that he still would like to have the consultative body of a parish council, that's up to him. Do we want to continue to maintain separate commissions, like Christian service? I don't know. I think there'd be a great, great value in bringing them together. And, and as we have begun to do, Pat, you're, and you're so familiar with this, St. Isaac's, St. Margaret's, and Our Lady of Hope collaborated on our Macris program.
Right. And it worked out well.
And I, yeah, so I, that, and that's a sign of family, and, and the, and the positive benefit that can come from that. So, whether they're go, if, well, whether there will be, continue to be separate commissions and a separate parish council, that's really up to the parish community and their priests, who is primarily responsible.
Thank you. And my other question is to Father David. You had mentioned a letter at Mass today that kind of threw a lot of people. Can you please explain that letter?
Going to get to ten thousand yet? So, that is, as Wade said, correct me if I got the numbers wrong, there are four. Oh, the question was, I, I explained the letter from the Archbishop. The Archbishop asking to move us all to priests in solidum, which those may be new, new terms for everybody. So, there are only going to be four pastors left in the Archdiocese, right? Three in Wave One, one in Wave...
Oh, yeah. A family of parishes that has a single pastor. Correct.
Yeah. So, my title, Father Jim's title, is no, no longer pastor, so we become priests of the family. And so, and that becomes a canon law question. In order for the Archbishop to do that, we all have to resign as pastor, and then he can assign us as a priest in the family. And I believe he's assigning us a six-year term within the family. So, does that help, or does that? So, my, even though the, the Archbishop is giving us primary responsibilities, like the assignment letters came out, I still will be responsible, I'll, I'll be, assuming he gives me primary responsibility here, I still will be a priest of St. Margaret, Our Lady of Hope, the rest, as will Father Jim, even though he's moderator, will be a priest of here and the other parishes as well.
As I explained earlier, one of the primary documents that the five of us need to work on is the covenant, in which we identify the parish community that we will be primarily responsible for. Father David, of course, will be St. Isaac's, myself, Our Lady of Hope, Father John, Holy Innocent, St. Bartis. But we no longer carry the title of pastor because we are priests in solidum. It's, it's really a canonical, fine point. In terms of your dealing with Father David, or the people of Our Lady of Hope dealing with me, nothing's going to change, except canonically. It's, it's terminology.
So, Father, do your covenant needs to be approved, though? Should it through?
Oh, oh, yeah.
If there's a pastor that's assigned, this family and other families is like here, as it's being laid out, there'll be maybe two, three pastors of, I don't know, churches or parishites, but you're going to have X number of families. That, that X number of families is going to be divided up by whatever number of pastors and parishites.
No, there, no. There, there are, there are, there are two models, there are two models in, in canon law regarding these new configurations. One is that priests are assigned in solidum to a family. None of them is, none of them carries the title pastor. Now, of the fifty-two families that are being formed in the Archdiocese, three in, did you say three in the first wave and one in Wave Two? Those four families have chosen the other model of one priest being the pastor, and any other priests that are part of that family would be his associates. The one is the, is it the Companions of Christ? Or Companions of the Crown?
I don't know. The, the two I know off the top.
The Salt, is it the Salt?
It's not the Salt. The two that I know off the top, I had one is up in Brownsville. Five parishes, thirty miles apart, and they only have one priest. Another one is Armada, Memphis, Richmond, thank you. And they traditionally had a priest over two of them, and then another one. And so, they just said, "We're going to put all three of those parishes, which are very similar, and they hope to have an associate pastor who's tied up kind of an Indian and just kind of the whole Catholic thing."
And I believe, is it, is it the Salts that are at St. Scott's?
Those are the two that I'm familiar with of the four, so I don't know.
I think there, there's a religious, religious community called Salts, Society of, pardon me?
Correct.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, Trinity, I think. Anyway, the Salts have responsibility for a couple or three parishes. And so, because they're all staffed by members of their congregation, it makes sense that one of them is the pastor. But those four are the, kind of the exception to the other model, which we are part of, that, which is the in solidum. But again, as I say, in terms of the effect on you, it's not going to make a difference at all. But it's just canonical terminology is what it is.
There were a couple handed to me. One, one was about Catholic schools merging, so I think we've answered that. The parish is suffering financially, and another one is not. Can one help out the other like families do?
Oh, sure. If St. Pio gets a million dollars and they don't know what to spend it on, huh, I'll be happy to take whatever. Now, in, in, in what I have, what I know of the finances in, of our family, none of us is rolling in dough. But I, I can envision maybe, say, a family in North Macomb, where you've got two very big parishes that have money in the bank, and they've been put into a family with a smaller parish that might be struggling. Well, yeah, there's nothing that would prevent that, the two larger parishes, to make a gift to the other parish. That, I mean, that, that can happen. But it will, in our family, I'm sorry to say, nobody's going to be handing over buckets of money to anybody. I know Father David would like it, but...
And I, and what we found with those families that have parish with different disparity as far as money, like the, the common funds that go to, maybe the two big parishes in that case each pay forty-five percent, and the smaller one pays ten, or they pay, each pay fifty, so...
Yeah, because I, I spoke earlier about sharing, that each parish will have its own budget, but that there will be, as we fill these director positions or whatever happens, that there will be shared expenses. And exactly, what proportionality will be, will that happen? Will it be twenty, twenty, twenty across the board? Or in a case where you had two very larger parishes that have more resources than the third smaller one, maybe it'll be forty-five, forty-five, ten. So, it'll, yeah, there are different ways that that could be done.
Here's another question.
Good evening, Father. I'm a fifty-two-year resident of St. Clair Shores. And one of the things that I've observed is, starting off fifty years ago, the schools were busier, there were more kids. And since then, the neighborhood has changed over a few times. Some of us are getting old, like me. And they've moved out of the parish to other parishes north of us, so they got new churches up there. Of course, our churches are suffering from lack of parishioners and students to keep the schools going. So, sooner or later, I think the matter of economics is going to kick in, and you're going to have to consolidate one way or another. He just described a couple of parishes I'm well worth. Lexington, Crosswell, and Port Sanalak. They're down to using two churches. They closed the one in, in Crosswell, but that parish got small, I think, rather quick. So, anyhow, sooner or later, I think, whether we like it or not, we're going to have to consolidate in order to keep going.
That, that's a possibility. But I, again, the track record of regional schools is not very good. There are a couple of exceptions that, I mean, there are a couple of regional schools that have really flourished, but there are probably more that failed. So, I mean, yes, it's, it, it's a thought, it's a, something we do have to contemplate, but I do it with caution because, as I say, the, the track record of regional schools, of consolidated schools is not very good. Because, as I also said earlier, just as each parish has its unique character, its unique features, so do schools, you know? You know, I think certainly in the last eight, nine years, with the Sisters of, and Dominican Sisters from Ann Arbor here at St. Isaac's, that's given this school a different character than St. Germain's school. Now, can they be brought together successfully? I don't know. Certainly, Father David and I will have continuing conversations about that. But I don't, I, I just have a caution at this point.
Yeah. Another one in writing here says thoughts on sharing of music to rotate amid the families of parishes, for example, during actual Sunday masses, so that may fall in that same thing of, does it make sense? I'm, I'm sure you're not even at that stage of even talking about it.
Oh, no, I, I mean, certainly, I mean, that's where the, having a director of worship would be someone that would look into coordinating the use of musicians, choirs, talent, whatever. But that's, but that's something that's going to have to, you know, it's going to develop over time. That was in, in fact, when, when St. Gertrude's and St. Germain merged, that is, was the glue that brought us together, was the music ministry. That truly was the glue that brought us together. So, I, I understand the, the power that there is in a worship program. So, yes, if, if and when we move in the direction of a director of worship for the family, certainly that will be something that they would look into.
Hi, Father.
Oh, yes, I, I don't know where you, oh, there you are.
I'm a Dominican sister, and, you know, we follow the Thomistic tradition. We like to define terms. And I've looked on the website for the families of parishes, and I have not found any explanation of what the term in solidum means. I'm assuming it's a Latin term. I'm ashamed to say my Latin is not very good. Do you, can you shed any light on what that means? So, if Father David is in fact appointed as the priest primarily responsible, and he's the priest in solidum, what does in solidum mean? Because I think that's unfamiliar to all of us.
Solidarity. You know, in, in, in solidarity, that we, we work as one. I, well, I didn't bring my, my, my workbook that I got from my baby moderator's school, but it does, and I, I can share it with Father David. The, the specific canons that define in solidum, I can get, I'll give that, I'll get that to Father David, and he can...
The triennial, the five twenties?
Yeah, it's in the five twenties, yes. There, there's a whole, there's a whole series that Mr. Truman identified for us.
We're about an hour and a half in. I don't know if there are other questions. I also don't want to rush too much. Here you go, coming up behind you with the microphone.
I'd just like to address the idea that, you know, we're, we know we're going down, there's no kids in the neighborhood and all that. We've got to remember the reason that we're all here is to spread the gospel, okay? And to, and, and that's why this whole thing is being put together, because we want to spread the gospel amongst the people. And I will tell you, I believe fully that there's plenty of Catholics in the neighborhood, they're not coming to church. And if we reach out to the non-practicing Catholics, we're going to have trouble finding a seat on Sunday morning. And that's where we have to keep our, our eye on the ball. That's the ball, not the five parishes, not the in solidarium, not who's your pastor, or not a pastor anymore. The idea, the ball we got to hit is the ball that says, "We're going to go out, we're going to evangelize." And the easiest people to evangelize are those who have fallen away. Then we can continue to go out, and we won't be able to find a place if we're, if we're successful.
Deacon John, that's exactly what the Archbishop shared with us, if, when we were at our formation sessions, is that family of parishes is not the end, but it's meant to be the means to get to our strategic planning.
Great question.
Yeah. So, that family of parishes is, is the building block that is to underline, under, yeah, underlay, underlay. Now, my English grammar system is off the wall. But the, the, the family of parishes is only the means by which we should get focused on the missionary strategic plan, which is evangelization.
Any other questions?
The, my question is, the slides that you had on the screen earlier about the distribution of different, I can't think of the word, but are those slides available online?
Yes.
So, if I go to families of parishes, I don't know if I can see those slides.
I'm not sure about these. There's numerous slides on there. What I will do is I will have this slide, all of this available to all five pastors, and you can just get ahold of someone within the parishes here. So, I'm not sure exactly what it is. We combined a number of things here to try to give an overview. You know, we've done numerous slide shows over the years, in the, the last couple of years, and we, so I'm not sure exactly if this is, definitely not in its entirety, but you may have to go to four different places. Okay, the family structures? Yeah, yep.
Good. I want to, I want to ask a question. How many of you are from Our Lady of Hope? Just raise your hand. How many are from St. Isaac's? How many are from St. Margaret's? How many are from St. Pio?
How many know?
And how many are from Holy Innocent?
How many know everybody here? So, we're going to get to holy homework here, but one of the things is introduce yourself to somebody that you don't know. And we also don't all need to sit in our own parishes, too, just to kind of get to know other people.
Well, you know, it's something that was really, there's a question back there. It was, we had a great, one, you know, in the, one of the opening slides talked about how this began in 2014. Well... Well, it was a family, a year of prayer, but also in 2016, Archbishop Ignorant brought in the Amazing Parish Conference. It was the most amazing parish conference that I've been in 40 years of ministry. And one of the, the, the presenters all pointed to the fact that the Sunday experience is the most important. Preaching, music, and hospitality. And, and we got a whole number of different suggestions as to things you could do. And one of them was name tag Sunday. I don't know, we did it a couple of times. It was, it was great. But then COVID, you know, stopped so much of this. But now that it, now that it seems that we are coming out of it, we can begin to energize some of those things that we had to put on hold for the last two years. Like, we've had to, we had to suspend coffee and donuts because, well, we don't have any place to do it because we, for distancing, we had to take over the social hall. But anyway, that's, but, so I think as we get out of the, the COVID and are able to get back a lot of the hospitality and other things that we weren't, we haven't been able to for the last two years, I think we can get on that trajectory of mission strategic planning. Yes.
Okay, so this is more of a pragmatic question, and if you understand what you've got to go. Is there, with yourself, Father Ron, have you established, or are you establishing kind of a parish that's going to be in the future, in the next 10 years?
I'm not quitting.
Are there going to be three main priests that are going to serve us by the parishes?
Oh, you certainly, yeah, we certainly, I mean, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm, yesterday, yeah, yesterday morning, I had a funeral. I was fine. I got, I went home. I was going to go out to lunch, and my right knee decided that it didn't want to work. So I'm very slow tonight. But, I mean, I have no, I have no intention to retire, at least, well, I'd say 2026 because that'll be my 50th anniversary of ordination. But if I'm, if I accept being part of this, which I have, as Father David pointed out, we are appointed for a six-year term, which takes me to 2028. And I, that's fine. Father Ron has been silent. You know, I can't read his mind what he intends to do. Am I, am I preaching to the choir people? You know, so I don't know. But yes, I mean, when we had our first priest gathering last, a week ago Tuesday, yes, we, we talked about, you know, what's, what the reality is going to be when there are not five, there are four. But that's, that's, again, is a whole part of that covenant, and the fact that it's not going to be written in stone. We have, part of that whole thing is flexibility, that we have to be able to be flexible. And we can do that more easily, and we can do that better if we do it as a family, rather than each of us try, oh, where am I going to get a priest for the weekend? Or, you know, who's going to take that funeral? Or, if we do it together, we'll be able to handle it better, I believe.
Any other hands? Is there anyone else? A few more slides here that, I've slept since I put them together, so I can't remember exactly what. So here's some holy homework. So resolve to learn something new about a parish of, in your, of the parishes in your new family. So either attend a mass, introduce yourself to someone in the parish, go to reconciliation, participate in adoration, read their bulletin. You can also do that on, online. Take a look at their website, review the Facebook page. Lent is a great opportunity to go with different stations across or different opportunities.
I had it printed in my bulletin, and I, today I told them, "Cut it out and put it out in your refrigerator." I had printed the additional times for individual reconciliation. Well, before COVID, our vicariate had these tremendous communal penitence services with individual reconciliation. Of course, we had to suspend that for the COVID period. But because Lent was coming up and, you know, we had no idea where it was going up or if it was going down, so instead of scheduling communal penitence services, what many of the parishes in our vicariate are offering is additional times. And Father David, as vicar, put together a schedule that he received. And I published it in my bulletin, and I would just encourage, if, if the other pastors haven't done so, to do it. Because that would be a great way for you to, you know, if you're going to want to receive the sacrament from a priest other than your pastor. "Oh, that's you again?" Oh, that's, that's a great story. When I was first ordained, I was at St. Agatha, St. Anne's in Warren, which, which 45 years ago was a very Polish parish. And we had confessions at 11 o'clock on Saturday morning, 3:30 in the afternoon, and after the evening mass, tons of confessions. I was, my second assignment was to St. Agathas at Redford Township. And Father William J. Murphy and I, he was assigned as pastor and I as associate the same day. The first Saturday, we both went over for confession. Nobody. I'm going, "What?" Well, Father Murphy did a little research. The founding pastor yelled, "You did what?" And of course, you'd come out of the confessional, and everybody would go like... So, so people stopped going to confession at St. Agathas. They went up to Dunscotus at 10 Mile and Beach Hall. Anyway, so I don't yell. I don't yell. "Really? Really? You did that?" Oh, no, no. Anyway, but that would be a great way to experience the sacrament in other parishes that during Lent were offering these extra times.
Again, I will share this PowerPoint with all the priests, and then, and they can figure out how to disseminate that. So familiesofparishes.org is the place to go. We did a lot of that in Wave One, especially because of, we weren't able to meet in person, so there's a lot of frequently asked questions there. We, as we broke things up as a family, Mary Ann Hannigan is actually the missionary that's going to be walking with this family. We do it as a team, so she's on vacation this week, and so that's why I'm here. But just going forward, that's her information. And anyone can get, you can get a hold of me or her with any questions that you have. And I just want to thank you, because this, when you don't, when you have an absence of answers, people start making them up, and I appreciate your, even your hard, seemingly hard questions. Some of these things the family is going to decide, and, you know, there is, as we work together, we can come up with answers and solutions that we can't even imagine to still evangelize and to get out to other people, which is ultimately the goal. So I thank you for this opportunity myself. I think the last slide here then is the Family of Parishes Prayer. And I would love to play this, pray this together. I'm not sure how well it can be read.
That's awfully small print. "I will lead you, and if you've got perfect vision, please join." Let us pray. Father in heaven, renew your wonders in our time as though by a new Pentecost. Holy Spirit, increase your gifts in us to move boldly into family of parishes with confidence. Deepen our desire for every person to encounter Jesus anew. Grow daily as his disciples and give witness to his love and mercy. This is our mission, and in we embrace it anew. Grant that your holy church in Detroit, praying perseveringly and insistently with one mind, together with Mary, the mother of Jesus, and guided by St. Joseph, St. Anne, and blessed Ussana Casey, may increase the reign of the divine Savior, the reign of truth and justice, the reign of love and peace. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Name of the Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you all. As I said, we're, well, I kind of, well, I, I jump-started the, the process of family by inviting the other pastors for lunch in July. And then in September, I hosted a luncheon for pastoral staffs. And then in November, I had invited the pastors to invite their parish leadership, however they wanted to define parish leadership, for an afternoon at Our Lady of Hope, just to share and, and, and kind of express concerns about this upcoming family of parishes. And what I heard that day, which by the way, was the day that I announced that I was going to be moderator, what I heard that day from all of the parish leaders that were there was a lot of positive energy about this. And like Deacon John said, you know, let's not focus on declining numbers or whatever, but let's, let's focus on the positive energy that we can unleash in, in this move to family of parishes. Thank you.
And, and, is there a final blessing? If you wait, we'll get a final blessing. I always need more. I can tell you that.